Okay, Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, December 17th, 5:30 PM. Mr. Moglen, Mr. Fox, Mr. Deedy and Mr. Steinhardt in attendance. This meeting is being recorded, and again, it's 5:30.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. The first thing before we begin our meeting is public comments. It's anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the board. This would be your opportunity to do that. I'd ask if you're gonna make a statement, if you please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here?
I don't know. Yes, please. Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire. So I apologize profusely for not getting these to you sooner, but I know that you're all aware that CRC, that's who I'm here on behalf of, and LMC and Conservation Commission have all been working together to draft a letter for both the EOA Secretary Thierides and also for the Lieutenant Governor to request the funding, the release for the alum treatment for the lake. We're really kind of at this point in time where the cyanobacteria levels have just been increasing and increasing over time as they build up. They're feeding on the phosphorus and it's causing toxic levels that are potentially a threat to pets and people and possible lake closure. And so, you know, I think we've done a lot with copper sulfate treatment over the years. Actually been two and a half tons of copper sulfate put into the lake to try to control it, but it's just a Band-Aid measure. So it's not doing anything for us long-term, and indeed, the copper does not degrade. So as you all are aware, we're sitting on the Great Brook Aquifer, feeding our drinking water for ourselves and neighboring towns, and that just proposes a real serious risk for us over time. You know, if we had to use it again, I think it could be used again, but I think the Conservation Commission is not excited about that idea. We have backing from other agencies, Department of Fish and Game, and I think that folks at the state level, they're aware of our needs, but we're not really sure if that money is available on the environmental bond bill, sort of why aren't we getting it? And so, we're looking to you all to really help us advocate to get these funds released from the state so that it could be treated this summer. Because if, I mean, at this point, we have so many volunteers, you guys know, you know, we've got LMC folks that are checking this water every single day and taking these water samples up to Leemass every single day to make sure they catch a bloom when it comes up. We have a company on retainer that has to come and treat within three days if the levels get to a certain point. But what could happen is if like we miss something and they really get jacked up, if they're 70,000 cells per milliliter, then it becomes toxic and then you guys would have to post a notice, shut down, possibly the ramps and beaches, and then at that point, at the 70,000 mark, you cannot use the copper sulfate. That's a state rule. So we'd be stuck. Our hands are tied. So we really feel like it's at this critical point, you know, this Band-Aid treatment's been used a lot. It's not a good long-term solution. The aluminum has not been applied since 1989 and when it was, they didn't have the technology, they didn't understand like how much to do and how to do it. So it really wasn't effective for very long. But if this gets done, we're talking about benefits of upwards over 15 to 20 years. So I mean, that's huge, like take care of it and then can relax for quite a while. The water will be clearer, you know, protected and then we don't have to worry about lake closure. I mean, you know, the lake closure would just be so detrimental to our economy, so many bass fishing tournaments, people coming into Southwick to, you know, shop in our stores and our gas stations and all kinds of things, our restaurants. So that's kind of the piece. So the letter that you have is what we're planning on sending to Polito and Thierides, and then I'll also give you a copy of this, which is the layperson's terms, I guess you call it, of more the way that I explained it, that we're gonna be putting out, CRC's gonna be putting on our website and putting out to social media so that residents are aware of the need for advocacy and that they can reach out as well, because I think it's helpful for our folks at the state level to know that Little Southwick is here and in need and, you know, looking for their support. Just as kind of a start, I mean, this is obviously nothing, this is legal or whatever, but these are signatures from Southwick and Southfield residents and other people that use the lake, and this was just like, you know, a hundred that almost that I grabbed just over the weekend for people that would really look to you guys for support and pushing advocating.
Have we never not supported this?
No, it didn't say that you hadn't. In fact, on there, it does say, you know, that you have put forth a letter.
How far did we get last year?
Well, I'm talking about the alum treatment right now.
No, 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 but I understand that, but then what did we do last year? Didn't we put something for, what did we put in front of us for 800 grand? We didn't, we didn't?
Yeah, the funding wasn't secured last year.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, Russ and I gave, in fact, this is public comments, am I allowed to speak?
I hope so. I hope we can talk about it.
Well, it's the chairman's decision.
Yes, it's the chairman's decision.
We're not supposed to, because it's not on the agenda, but I think because it's Christmas, we're gonna do it.
Well.
Thanks, Anna.
Both on the day of the municipal vulnerability grant award where Secretary Thierides came with the Lieutenant Governor.
Correct.
We gave them the documents then, and then a week or two later, when we had the opening for the North Pond acquisition, when Ron Amadon was here, while everybody else was taking tours, Russ and I met with him and gave him another letter. So the selectmen have been very involved in trying to advocate for the funding to be released.
Yeah, good. No, it never said that you weren't, no, no, I don't know what you haven't done.
Because it does need to be done.
Yes, absolutely, good.
And that's why we, I have emails that I'm gonna send to the chairman of the Conservation Commission, will show him that last November, we started the research, and we were researching it all the way into January in terms of what the legal process was, and some of that, you know, information was known by other parties and we, it just sort of got pushed aside because we went out to bid for it, but the money didn't come through, so there was no treatments done, and then, you know, all the oxygen in the room was taken up by the other project.
Yeah, yeah.
Good analogy though, with taking up all the oxygen, which we did there.
I saw that too.
If I may have another comment about the copper sulfate, the problem also with copper sulfate?
Name and address?
Christopher Pratt, 152 Berkshire. Sorry. Is that it's developing a resistant cyanobacteria strain?
Sorry.
So that's more of the big point, that we're really developing a Petri dish out there.
Like with antibiotics, if you overuse them, they become less effective. So, but also, you know, I know you guys got a lot to do, I don't want to take up any more time, but if you have suggestions for us, what you think we should do, who you think we should contact, what do you think, you know, our organization should do, we are all ears and we'll do, you know, whatever you guys want. Or if you read some of this and you say, well, Michelle, I think you should, you know, on the citizen's part, not the other letter, I can't change that, but, you know, tell me if you think that I should add something to that or change wording or whatever, then I'm all ears and, you know, let me know, because we really, really, I mean, honestly, I'm a little scared.
Dr. Wagner's been writing about this issue for a couple of years.
He's amazing.
Reports that we get.
He assisted with the drafting of that letter.
Last October, October 18th, you know, he sent a letter to the state.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's just been going on for a long time.
No, the record, the record, there's a good record to the state record that was signed by the governor.
If we all give a push, that might help, I don't know.
I think you have to work, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I think it has to be done in parallel. I was a little surprised. We had looked at this, I know it had come in front of us a few times, we had recommended they had addressed this at the CPC. I know the research was done, whether this was eligible for funding under CPC. We had an opinion letter that it was, based on the changes to the bylaw, to the CPA that were done, because there was a previous letter that was the opposite of that, prior to the changes in the CPA law. There was an application in front of the CPA that was withdrawn by the chair of the Lake Management on the day of the hearing, and there had been no pipeline, yet, yeah, there was an environmental bond bill with this money in the bond bill, but they've never taken that bond bill off the shelf.
It's because people don't understand that there's an appropriation that has to be made.
Again, that's the appropriation part of it. So getting it in a bond bill, that's a tenth of the battle, the other nine-tenths is getting the appropriation to it.
It's more, that's more of the PR stuff.
Correct. So my point is, that's probably an avenue that should be pursued in parallel, is get this in front of the CPA and, and look at, as a, as a, probably potentially a quicker funding mechanism to do it. I realize it's a great pond, it's the state's responsibility, whatever, yes, but who's gonna suffer the most when we lose the lake?
Absolutely.
Certainly not the state of Mass, right?
They're not gonna be here dealing with it.
Correct.
That's right.
You know, and, and I, just by personal experience, you know, I, I talked to the gentleman, his name escapes me at the moment, who comes to all the lake.
Eric Mueller?
Yeah, the guy who does the excellent budget hearing every year. Mr. Mueller.
Yeah, yeah.
Mueller. You know, there's a lake near my home in hometown that they exactly lost it this year, and it was closed all summer for a tremendous bloom. I, I see how it could happen. The only other question I have that I've never really heard an answer to is, we talked about putting two tons of, I think it was two tons?
Two and a half tons.
Two and a half tons.
Yeah.
So how many tons of aluminum are we gonna put into the lake and what, I understand that the environmental impact of that as well, just to...
It's a naturally occurring, occurring element and it does degrade.
I get it. So, but that's part of, I think that should be just part of the outreach, because if we're gonna bring up, we're gonna put two and a half tons in, I'm sure it's gonna be way more than two and a half tons of aluminum sulfate, just by the area times the depth that they're talking about. Just when you put that out there, to understand what the impact of that is.
It's about 188 acres, I think, at depths of 16 feet.
I guess, but put it, put it out there in context with, okay, because someone's gonna, someone's gonna bring it up.
Right.
You know, right. So that's what my only feedback.
Okay, appreciate that.
Were you, you were, you know, obviously, this had gone up to bid, the alum treatment.
Correct, yeah, it's all bid, it's all show and enter.
So when the numbers came in, which those numbers are now gone, because Joe had allowed, when Joe was chairman last year, he had okayed it to go up to bid without having an appropriation, which, you know, I wanted to make sure that the chair was okay with it. So I think that bid came in in the high fours, and then there was gonna be money that had to be added on for Wagner and some other testing, so it was gonna be closer to 600 at that time, because some of the bidding was more competitive because of the neighbor. So if you haven't actually seen all the bidding documents and actually the bid results, I think you should, I think you should go look at the bid results.
Mr. Wagner and Dick and, you know, they, the research that they've done.
Yeah, they are, they both participated in this, talking and stuff.
So, but the only reason why I'm saying this, we might be able to do it, you know, we might be able to do it in a little bit more affordable number, so that can make it palatable for the committee and, and the people to have to vote for it in town.
I don't think the number is the issue, it's the appropriateness of it.
Well, I know, that's gonna concern, I was concerned about Devon, but...
CPC money, it was a...
I know, you were always told...
...word to believe and told forever and ever, it's not for state property, it's for your town. This is for your town, although, and Doug said, it does impact our town, and I would love to stay here.
Oh, no, no, I get it, but it's, it's in our town, it's, it's within the borders of Southwick, and I, I know that we...
I'm going to, I'm going to send you that information.
I know it was done, and I know it was checked into, and that, and...
And I did have a letter in disagreement to that.
But it, I had that history, because it had backdated the changes to the CPA, because originally...
But the changes to CPA didn't really address that state issue.
I get it, but, but from, again, from what I read, we'll have to go over it again, but from what I read, and there was an application made to CPA that was never, it never got to the point of being debated in public to see where that's gonna go.
Right.
I would have, if it were me, I would have seen that process, so if they got the state grant good, we could give the CPC their money back, if they drew it on the floor.
Yeah, because that letter, that letter to West Tisbury was 2008, and the changes were made 2012.
Okay, what was the town, Wellesley?
Well, well, no, the, the letter Chris sent me.
That was West Tisbury.
Was West Tisbury, but Ken Wagner's information that he gave to Dick and I last year was from projects that he did representing the town of Wellesley.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Music CPA funding.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have to go through Dick, because we can't contact him directly ourselves.
Because the, one of the things the attorney was asking for, was he wanted to hear from the insurance, how long would this last, because he wanted to make sure that what he was proposing to approve would be good for 10 or 15 years, because it had to be, you know, you have to make sure that you bond it for the life of how long the asset's gonna last.
Right, yeah.
So the material, he said, Ken said, would be 10 or 15 years. So that'll be all in the documents.
Yeah, they've done a lot more research now, they know how to dose it properly, they know how to make it last, so it's...
Look at, but you got, what, the point is, if you're gonna bond, it has to be a life, it's a five-year deal, you can't take a 10-year note on the five-year, on the five-year deal.
Took a long line, but it lasted, yeah.
So when I looked at that, I said, oh, you know, Dick got what he needed from Ken, Wagner, and thinking, okay, he's the source, and that was good enough for the, that was good enough for bond council. Because what really matters in terms of this issue is what the, you know, the town council works out, and Ben has concurred with it. He was originally, had to do some research, come up to speed on it, and both of them are in concurrence.
So this is a really ignorant question, so pardon me, but what would the perils be of moving forward? If we have clearance from town council and bond council, and we have this information that we think is accurate, and we move forward to put it before the CPC and it got approved and we use the funds, I mean, where, where would we run into a problem? I don't know.
He just wanted to make sure that it could be appropriately used in terms of how the state law works, and of course, these are the attorneys that have looked at that.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see them step up and take care of their lake, but it's affecting us now, you know, so I mean, they have not a problem.
Oh, I know, well, see, that's why our discussion about using this mechanism, this funding, you know, was that it would be a backup plan in the event that the other thing happened.
Right.
And the fact that it didn't go through those other meetings to be properly, you know, discussed and explored, to say, hey, okay, we got this as a backup plan, but we really should try to get this money from these other entities, because it is their great pond.
Yeah.
They tell us every day it's theirs, so...
Yeah, they have a billion dollars.
But CRC and Southwick and Southfield have been paying for all the weed treatments, and Southwick and Southfield pay for all the copper sulfate, like...
All I can tell you is, I was, I was recommending it be the backup plan.
Yeah.
It didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. All right, guys, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Do you think of anything else? Yes, thank you. We'll be extended discussion.
All right. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2016B dated 12/16/19 in amount of $547,715.52. Minutes, did, did we have any minutes to approve?
No.
No, okay. All right, then why don't we go right to 1A, and Michelle Hill is here, and Michelle, a letter from you concerning schedule adjustment, because you'd like to complete your masters in public administration.
Yes.
Very good goal.
We're about to finish.
Okay. What, what were you, what were you thinking about doing as far as the hours, you know? I know you had to leave early some days.
It'd be once a week. Right now, I'm only gonna do, the first semester is one class, and then every semester after that until I'm done, it's gonna be two classes.
Yeah.
It'll be less than three years, and I'll get it all done.
Oh, okay. So it's not a big deal?
No, it really isn't. So like with the first semester, if I stay with the class I'm doing, it's a four to six, so I have to leave an hour early. I'm already gonna make that up with, you know, throughout the week anyway, so...
There you go. Do we have any problems with this? Concerns, issues, thoughts?
She's got a 10-year contract with us, right? 20-year contract?
Right, I mean, you're not getting this and leaving, right? Okay.
No.
Can you say that louder for the thing? Is that actually writing?
Yeah, but she said, no, it's on...
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually started when I was first here, and life got in the way, I had a child.
Yeah, I've heard that story before.
I'm old, and I, I can't go on life without finishing something I started.
All right, I need a motion to approve.
So?
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sign it. Sign it.
So I wanna see a trend here, and the next thing you know, no one wants to work after two, and then they want what they want, Thursday night late, and then Fridays off.
Carl's diner.
Where are we headed with this?
We close an hour early because of the snow day? What's he, what's he talking about there?
No, I didn't say that.
No, no, just, it's flip it.
Oh, okay.
Keep going, there's more in the folder.
Wait a minute, oh, okay.
You, you signed the...
I sent my copy, so I'm gonna throw that there.
There you go.
All right, thank, thank you. I did that deliberately to make sure you guys are all thinking. All right, 2A.
You threw it a degree though, right?
Yes.
I understood.
They kicked me out. 2A, again from Michelle Hill, this is concerning the different elections and the possibility of a part-time position. Would you like to talk about that? Because we know we got quite a few elections coming up.
We do, we have a total of six, five being, five being actual dates, because one of them is two separate elections and one election. That, that means I'm going to have 24 ballots to be dealing with.
Do we have voting machines for all of them?
Yeah.
Well, yes.
Poll workers, second set of poll workers, right?
Yeah, so they, they are telling, they're, they're saying that basically with two elections, you have to have two, everything pretty much, okay? But the machine itself would actually have it programmed, and again, I can envision this, but I, I can't yet, because this is new machines for us, so I have to kinda go through this motion, but they will have two cards in this machine that will be able to calculate the two elections, and they would all feed into the ballot box, which is much larger than the previous boxes that we used to have. So it should be, should be fine, but they'll also be color-coded, which will be fun, because then I have to take them out and, and separate them based on the elections. But I've been given some suggestions, I am kinda letting the dust settle, because everybody's like all worked up by was as well, with regards to this, and how to run two elections in one, one day, so, but that's the part, but the rest of the calendar year, like I said, there's a total of six in total, but there's five actual dates as we, as we stand right now. They're also in conjunction with tactical elections, so that's wonderfully timed with regards to that, so...
So it's gonna be hectic?
Uh, very, 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 yep.
All right. In the...
And of course, there's other stuff coming, your financial advisor, you know, you, because you're gonna have to deal with the quarterly billing thing at some point, and if you're, have an appetite to make that change at some point, you're gonna have to have a town meeting vote, so you'll have to have an article prepared for the May town meeting, just to have it approved so that it can be done the following year.
Right.
So you want us to begin to figure out the process of ramping up for all that and investing and putting a person in place.
Right. Okay. And we've, we've kicked around part-time positions over, over the years.
Yes, the need is there, it always has been, but it just, it seems like the duties, that list of duties, it just keeps multiplying.
Okay.
So I just wanna keep up with that.
All right.
And you can give them the details of the last budget process to refresh your recollection.
Correct.
Yes, I do, I do have a layout.
Because anything you would, anything you would do would be prorated anyway, whatever the cost was, if it was 15 or 16,000 and you're thinking about it, then you'd be saying, okay, what's the prorated cost to get to the end of the year if it's June 30?
Right.
And then, then you'd be annualizing it through the budget process.
All right. So this is for us to digest until after Christmas.
Yes.
Then we will sit down and try to see if we can come up with a plan.
And you can have us that information before then?
Yes.
And, and then we could sit down with the finance committee, right, and bring them into it.
Just a little highlight in there as well. So when early voting was brought forward to the town clerks, they made sure they did it in a soft version, oh wait, it'll only be for the state election.
Right.
Knowing for a while that that wasn't a factual statement. So with that said, now they're implementing early voting into the primaries, which, again, early voting is only supposed to be for the state election, so therefore even consideration should only be for the state primary. They're making it for the presidential primary that's coming up in March. So, but they're making statement that, okay, we're gonna do it here, but we're not gonna do it there. Well, that makes no sense. So I do foresee that happening for the state primary, which that election has been moved to September 1st, so therefore all this would be throughout a couple, a week or two if they do decide it.
That's right, that's before Labor Day, that's it.
Yes, yep.
So it's gonna be...
Yep.
A special election.
Yep. So, well, that's the, then September, that's, that's the primary already scheduled, the state primary. But then in November, we have two solid weeks of early voting prior to, so, you know, if it all goes to flourishes with early voting, there's only one election that doesn't have it, which would be our local.
So you'll have people...
I, I haven't heard back from the special...
You'll have people in August doing early voting, right?
If, if they move it for it, they're, they're saying that they're not, but they've said that several times to us before, and here we are, having early voting in front of the presidential, so, so it's just a preparation, I have to be on my guard with regards to that planning as well.
Now, do you think you could get, you know, if, if the board concurred with the finance committee and has some prorated dollars and put them there, how would you then move to execute the plan to get a person? So you'll have somebody, you know, at some point in time.
It would have to be something, I think we have to decide really early, so I can move forward.
Yeah, to get a, to get a person that would meet the requirements of the overall office, right?
Yes. What I, what I need to even just get through this is someone that has a good foundation of just the operations in the office. They may not need to know everything yet and be ready to start collecting funds and stuff like that, they won't be doing it, but all the other stuff we can't even get to in simple phone calls is what we need, because we're gonna get inundated with that at that time between the taxes and the election. And people are confused right now, we've already gotten some calls with regards to the March. Well, if I go in March 3rd, do I really need to go March 31st? Yes, it's too separate, so, you know, there's gonna be a lot of that.
That's the special election for the Senate.
Yes, the special election, yeah, so...
All right, so we got, we got a challenge that we need to address.
Yes.
And, so we have to hit the ground running right after the holiday, because if we're gonna do something, we wanna do it fast.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll have to decide, you have meetings, you have meetings here and here, you don't have one the 21st, because you're getting ready to go to the MMA, and then you have one the 28th.
Yeah.
But then your thing says you're going on Tuesdays to school?
I don't start until the 21st.
All right, but then you, that means you're not gonna have the 28th either, so it would have to be the 14th, or the 7th, or...
Well, if, if we could talk about it on the 7th or even the 14th, and finance committee, some of the members go to the MMA, we can have some informal discussions there, all stuff.
Okay, so you'll discuss it on the 7th, right.
Won't make any decisions, but we can have informal discussions.
And you would be submitting the documentation that they need, right?
Right, right.
I already got that.
So that we would shoot to have a decision made by the twenty-eighth. Cause that would be the next meeting we'd have to have after the MMA.
Okay.
Alright, is that, that good?
Yeah, cause you've already had discuss, you, we're already, you guys have already had discussions with the chairman on, uh, the supplemental differentials. For the, um, the health inspector.
Right.
Position, which prorated, you know, that was a, that was about a, what, a nine hour difference? And so you gotta prorate that for half the year already.
Right.
Okay.
Um, just one more statement with regards to elections. Um, our office is sending out a letter to all of our current poll workers because we have so many elections and so, so many, you know, things. They usually plan for one or two a year, not that many, um, you know of anybody, please send them away. So, we, um, so we have that coming back by mid-January, we'll know what our universe is to be able to accomplish that. So it's a, it's also two side, I, I need outsiders to come and be able to make our polls work too, so.
She can send some people over from the schools.
Well, I get limited amount, I'm allowed to bring in students, oh, we always seek them all the time, but we.
So you already do that.
Oh yeah, we already do that, so it's, it's, um, and they can live anywhere in the state of Massachusetts, as long as they're a Commonwealth. Um, and they can come in and help, so if you know of anybody, pass them on our way.
So this position, this would be part-time. Do you, I'm worried about the skill set personally. So if it's a part-time position, are you gonna look for someone that someday may morph into something more? I, I'm just so worried about what you need for a skill set that's then part-time.
Yeah.
And, cause you, we're not gonna have time to flush them out. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm assuming your level of skill set isn't as crazy as it would be when you're trying to actually fill a position.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yeah, I'm just, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's why I was saying, we, we'd have to do stuff, some, some. How, how do you get the person in, you know, recruited and in place and everything? So you gotta, there is, there is that lag time to accomplish that, to implement what is coming before.
No, I understood, but you may have to work with what you have, but when it does come in front of you.
I want a part-time person, I'm, I, I, that's just it, I, I want that, that position. I have everything else I need to work in within here, the other clerical position.
So if I understand what you're saying, Joe, is you wanna know out of, out of the full-time job description.
Yeah.
What are the, uh, what are the skill sets in the, in the duties?
Yeah.
That you want within the part-time person that, that you don't have to have, that you, you know, in terms of the full one. So what's gonna be the, what drops off?
Yeah, what drops off and, 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 and you're not gonna be able to just settle because we're not gonna have time eight weeks later to say the person's not working out. You know what I mean? And I'm not, I'm just, I'm being realistic, I'm not trying to be a jerk.
Oh no, I'm being realistic as well, meaning the fact that, uh, some people don't know how to multitask with so much stuff, so.
There's only so many great Russes and Joes and Dugs around.
But no, besides that, it's not, it's not that a lot of it has to do with, I can't take this.
No, I know, I just, I'm just nervous for you that, what's out there and what you need, that's just me venting, you know?
No, look, that's a good, that's something she's gotta be thinking about.
That scares me more than anything else.
With this for a, a long period of time.
Joe, you've given the, the student, the graduate student now has to think about that over the next two weeks.
Hey, I'm no professor, I'm never fifteen minutes late, but I'm just saying. It is what it is, that's all I'm done. Continue.
Alright, we got a plan.
We got a plan.
We're sticking with the plan. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for allowing the two fifty to set up on all five election days.
You're welcome.
Yeah, well, they're, they're my pick and choose, you know, they're not sure.
A table, you mean like a table?
A table.
Yeah, a table, you know.
Right on center, right?
Right.
But don't hire them to be your part-time help either. When they're doing nothing.
Alright, uh, motion to approve the renewals of liquor in what?
Entertainment.
Entertainment licenses for twenty twenty.
All good? Yeah, yeah, no, we kinda, we wanna make sure we have them in place, cause you're gonna renew them.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
But I would like walking the water, come in eventually, so I could sit down with them and go over a few things.
With you at one of those meetings.
I know, I know, but just would like that done before they think of their remodeling or construction or whatever they said they're doing this winter.
They'll be done by.
They haven't done anything.
Well, they'll be done by.
They'll be done, but I, I just wanna clean up a few other problems we're having over there.
Alright, four A is from Sergeant Thomas Krucka, uh, has everybody had a chance to read this? Uh, basically, uh, the Vesta dog, uh, is willing to, if we would donate our used. Obsolete, uh, dog officer cruiser, uh, they would be willing to make, uh, some.
Sizable grant donation to outfit the next replacement vehicle.
Because the stuff that is because of the model change of the vehicles, our old stuff is not gonna fit into the new vehicle.
Correct.
So, it, it appears, uh, Sergeant Kruck is, is thinking this is a pretty good deal. And a potential for considerable financial savings to the police department as well as the town. And the C A O has told me that, uh, there is a mechanism for doing this.
Your, um, your state, uh, policy that you adopted, which is really the state policy. Allows you to do sole, um, dispositions of up to five thousand. And the, um, obviously this vehicle will have high mileage.
Right.
A surplus one.
Right.
And it'll also have a significant number of extra, um, hours on the engine. So they felt that, um, we should be able to easily stay within that dollar cap. And if the Board of Selectment was so, um, inclined, I could double check with our outside auditor, Mr. Scanlon. That we could, uh, take this approach and then you then could, in your budget process. When, when the police come before you, right now they're looking for two vehicles next year.
Right.
One of them is a K nine unit replacement, which is this Tahoe, and the other one is a marked interceptor.
Right.
So they're both marked ultimately, so that's what they're contemplating now. Um, in addition to that, you may end up wanting to take another vehicle of theirs offline. Like the lieutenants, if you wanna repurpose that for the health inspector. Issue that you were discussing last week about, you prefer to have a, another vehicle for the in-town inspector.
With the town seal on it.
Ri- right, with a seal on it, so, so that would address that issue. But the cost of doing that obviously would be, you'd have to do, do a third vehicle like you did this year.
Right.
And that you just replaced the pool car with.
Right.
So, but that's a different issue.
Right. How did you get to a Tahoe here? Or is that a, not, that's not in this letter?
It's, um.
Yeah, third paragraph, I thought I saw Tahoe.
I talked to Mike about that three months ago.
Oh, did you?
I just saw it for the consistency of their fleet, I don't know why they couldn't use one of, you know, they couldn't buy a new.
Yeah.
Another Explorer to be the canine car and why the Tahoe is different, it's, it's way bigger, but I don't, I don't know if that's the case.
I don't know if it's lower?
I thought, uh.
Yeah, but you're correct, it is, it is a Tahoe that they're talking about.
I know, that's lower to the ground for the dog to get in and out.
Lower, I wanted to say lower.
That's, that's what they had always told us before, it had to be lower for the dog.
Well, don't worry, because at the end of the day.
We're not at that point.
The chief is coming in, in, in January for his budget preview as you've requested.
Right. Alright, so.
So the question is, do you want him to continue this research or you so inclined to, you know, to, to be favorable for this to be? Um, in terms of the, it, it really comes down to two things, they're getting a new vehicle no matter what.
Right.
And this, in the proceeds from donating this, the surplus vehicle to this entity. Would garner you a better return on your investment to outfit that new car.
Correct.
It's almost like a trade-in.
Yeah, a better trade-in.
A better trade-in.
Than we're gonna get out of.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor. Much more.
On that note, right.
Make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second that.
All in favor?
So Russ, if you could just put on that three, nothing, yes, per auditor concurrence.
What, we said again?
Three, nothing, approved, per auditor concurrence.
Three, nothing.
Approved.
Approved.
Three, okay.
And, and legible.
Cause the first step is.
That's what Cindy would.
The first step is.
Why don't we sign it too? How's that?
There you go.
I'm gonna get my thumbprint.
Oh my god. Okay. Alright, five A, uh, Mr. Johnson wants to hold a race January nineteenth, Sunday. Uh, chief of police says it's not a big deal, not very many people, it's a small racing event. I think they've had something like this in the past in the snow, right?
And as you can see, I, I did inquire, there's no, no liquor, no permits, no entertainment, none of those other things are.
Right. Is that, uh, Martin Luther King weekend or anything like that or?
Nope.
Yeah, it is actually.
Is it? Really?
That is right.
January nineteenth.
Yeah, that's the twentieth. MLK is the twentieth.
And that's vacation week for the kids then, the nineteenth, or, or, no, that's February vacation.
No, it's just a long weekend.
Long weekend.
It's a long weekend, yeah, cause your vacation is in February.
Alright, so we're, we're not gonna get, there shouldn't be any issue with noise, it's a small race. It's a holiday, but they get, okay.
Monday's a holiday.
Motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, from the analysts, okay. Comcast, um, we're not rushing, we can take this up in March. Um, police, um, department, um, guidelines, I mean, now we.
Hold those, is that a new set?
That's the same set.
Same set, right. So, wanna table it?
Yes.
Okay, it's tabled.
And can you take it out and, and, and put aside so they can not reprint it again? So we'll give that back to them, so they don't reprint it three times? I wanna save that cherry tree.
Alright, so we're all passing these back in?
Just, you know what I mean, cause they're gonna reprint and put it in our file.
So they don't reprint that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get rapid, put a bow on it for them.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so we've gone through all that. Authorized C A O to execute agreements of M O D for ADA improvement grant program.
Right, what happened was this, we, we've been tentatively, um, awarded an eighteen thousand dollar plus grant. For, by the Massachusetts Office of Disability, which is the agency that regulates, um, ADA, um. Issues in communities and I did an application with Erica Johnson for this program.
Yep.
And so we've been approved for it and so, um, I'm just waiting for them to clarify some, um, procurement issues. And, um, the, all the documents that came to me for this are all in my name as the C A O. So as opposed to the, the chairman, I'm signing off on it, I would like the board's authority for myself to execute these agreements on behalf of the town.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you have, thank you.
Good luck.
And you, you of course know why we have to do this.
Correct.
It's required to have this plan done and in place for future grants.
Absolutely. Under Old Business Holiday Gathering for Town Hall Staff and Volunteers, elected officials. Uh, and families is, uh, this Friday from five to seven. Uh, the C A O Holiday Gathering is tomorrow, eleven AM to one PM, I dropped off my point set, so I'm golden.
Roy Benson's coming.
Roy Benson's coming.
The sponsor of the, of the point set.
Attending?
Um, I, we, Lanfer didn't open, I've been in contact with her, yes, I will be there to pass out the salad.
Tending?
Yes, I moved.
No, Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Where's this?
There's two events, this tomorrow's.
Senior Center.
So I'll be there for that.
Alright, alright, so we're covered on that.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Wednesday. Department heads are helping.
All the department heads are helping like we do every year, it's wonderful.
Alright, and send my, send my best wishes.
You need an apron, I'll get you a black one, or a black or green, doesn't matter. Alright, you got one.
Uh, Director of Health Recruitment update?
Um, I met with Tammy, uh, who passed all the necessary issues related to the offer of employment conditions. All those have been met, uh, the letter of understanding has been negotiated between the, her and the Board of Health. I assisted the chairman in those efforts and then today I met with her. And, uh, another member of the Board of Health and we signed off on our contract, she's gonna give notice today. And they are signing off and ratifying it Thursday evening in their posted meeting and she'll be starting January first.
Beautiful. Uh, is she gonna come in so we could meet her at some point?
We will make arrangements.
Thank you. Um, any other old business?
No, Carl, can you just have, um, your office send an email tomorrow to everyone reminding them about the Friday event? Just in case, that, you know, for the holiday.
Oh, you mean all the boards and committees?
Yeah, just, just a, just a quick, fresh one, that's all.
Yeah.
Just, just to.
Yeah, Joe was working with Robin on all those.
And, and Robin said that we've kinda streamlined it and.
We, yeah, I think we did fine.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Um, any other old business? Okay, new business, you have, uh, review updates and, uh, select board goals and objectives, we're gonna table that.
Okay.
Alright, uh, the only other new business I had was, uh, we have a request from our animal control officer. Uh, to have a dangerous dog hearing and I've read this over and I, I think she makes a good case. And I'd like to tell her that we should, uh, do that in January.
Okay.
Whoop. And it's nothing, I'm not prejudiced against dogs.
I thought you were, did you go whoop, did I hear whoop?
Well, you know, he gets a lot of phone calls that start out with the word whoop, whoop, rough, rough.
Yeah, like start to shake. Anyways, any other new business? Yes, Mr. Stein?
Um, I had a visit by the, um, I believe, uh, the chairperson of the Agricultural Commission. Uh, Bert Hansen.
Okay.
And he would like to, uh, be submitting a, um, a budget for that committee. There's never been a budget for the Ag Commission.
Yep.
And it's been a, you know, a committee that's probably used money from other departments to help out, but, uh, so he went. And, uh, met with the town accountant and they both came to see me, so I explained to him that, uh, she could give him some budget sheets. And then they could make a proposal and that we would, you know, we, we would receive it. And then depending upon the dollar threshold, that would tell the chairman whether or not it constitutes a meeting. Cause sometimes the lower dollar threshold ones you don't have meetings with, you just deal with it as a budget issue.
Correct.
So, um, so be looking forward to, um, proposals for some level of financial support. To the Agricultural Commission in your next budget document.
Okay, sounds good. Any other new business?
Um, on Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with the, um, design company on the fire department improvements. They've come through and done the, uh, the assessments, the site visits, um, the forensic issues. In terms of looking at the structure, the masonry, the roofing, up into the, uh, ceilings and so forth. So they're gonna be going over a draft report that I, that was emailed to me, I'll send it to you guys. And, um, and they'll be going, and we're gonna talk about what the next steps are for that project.
Okay. Alright, do we need to have an executive session?
No, sir.
We don't. Then a motion to adjourn.
For the year.
Second.